Okay, everybody, we'll get started. Welcome to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners' monthly meeting. And it's a little bit different. We've had the great honor of honoring Mr. Mitch Gillespie Day at four o'clock today. And so we've got a little spill over. That's fine. We can definitely take time to give honor where honor is due according to how the Bible says it, give honor where honor is due. So we want to honor him today. So first, though, first thing I want to do is go ahead and begin with prayer and pledge. So if everybody will please stand today with us. And we're going to have Commissioner Linkering do the prayer, and Commissioner Patrick Ellis will listen and pledge.
Let's pray. Fathers, we come to you this evening, we come thanking you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you so much for all that you've done for us. We pray this evening that you'd help us, give us the guidance and the wisdom to make the decisions for this county as you see fit. Father, we ask you this evening for our friend Mitch Gillespie that you would bless his life and pray for health and strength. Father, we pray that you would just honor him with your presence in his life every day that he has on this earth. Father, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. May be seated. Okay, commissioners, we have our minutes before us. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second discussion, all favor say aye. Can you oppose, left side? Okay, we have tonight's agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions by our board members and/or staff?
I'll mention, I can do it either under reports, communications, or if you want to do it under a new business item. It has come to our attention about Charlotte Water, which is now, what was Charlotte Mecklenburg Utilities, requesting an inter-basin transfer amendment. And it's something we need to be engaged with. And so I've got a little bit of information. I'll have more next month. And that could be it right there as far as a report. But I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that we'll look into it and then bring back more information next month.
Okay, by consensus, is that good enough, gentlemen?
Yes.
And check with, see what the EMC's standing is on this one.
Notify board members of the date, give us numbers, and we need to form partnerships to get the old group together to fight this transfer.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, let's move to item A. We have the Honorable Mitch Gillespie with us. Mr. Mitchell Gillespie, if you don't mind, sir, come to the podium. We've had a great time of recognizing and picking, spoken the different things Mitch has done on behalf of the county, the city, the town of Old Ford, and our educational partners also. And friends have spoken in the lobby and made comments about Mitch. So Mitch, we're so glad to have you here tonight. We appreciate all your work, your friendship, what you've done for McDowell County, and you never stop working. That's what I love about you. This guy never slows down. Barbara said it, the energizer of any understand at three o'clock now, you gotta ease off a little bit, and we understand that. But Mitch, thank you so much for all you've done for McDowell County. You've been an inspiration to many, to me, the board members. Your work ethic is not to be touched. Young people today, I had a conversation today, young people today do not have the work ethic that older citizens have in our county. And you've proven to be a tireless worker, advocate for McDowell County. We so much appreciate that. And the board wants to honor you tonight publicly, and we've got a resolution tonight that the board wants to adopt. And we're going to read it and then present it to you tonight after we adopt it, Mitch. So I'll go and read the resolution at this time. McDowell County Resolution and Declaration for Mitch Gillespie. Whereas Robert Mitchell Mitch Gillespie was born and raised in McDowell County, and whereas Mr. Gillespie attended Wake Technical Community College and returned to McDowell County to pursue business opportunities, and whereas Mr. Gillespie was elected to the North Carolina House of Representatives in 1988, and whereas Mr. Gillespie represented McDowell County as part of the 49th and later the 85th House Districts from 1999 until 2013. And whereas during his tenure in the House of Representatives, Mr. Gillespie was able to provide support and leadership to many important causes that provided benefit to the people of McDowell County and North Carolina, such as bringing a dialysis treatment facility to the county. And whereas Mr. Gillespie resigned from the House of Representatives in 2013 to accept a position with the North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, and whereas Mr. Gillespie continued his work with the state of North Carolina until retiring in 2018. And whereas the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce recently recognized Mr. Gillespie for his decades of service by awarding him his Distinguished Public Service Award. Once a year, one person of the state receives this award. Now therefore being resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their gratitude to Mitch Gillespie for his many decades of service to McDowell County and congratulate him on the receipt of the North Carolina Chamber's Distinguished Public Service Award. And furthermore, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby declare Friday, April 12, 2024, as Mitch Gillespie Day in McDowell County. Not many people have a day in their honor, Mitch, so it's yours on the 12. And adopt it this day, the 8th of April, 2024, by the McDowell County Board of Commissioners. Gentlemen, I have motioned to approve the resolution. Second. Discussion, all favor say aye. Can you oppose, left side? I do want to read before we present this, Mitch, just to let the people in the public understand how big a deal this award is that this man received. One person a year is honored with the reward. Right. So I'm gonna read some of the names of former award winners in the year they got it. 2022 Senator Kay Hagan received this award. 2021 Governor Dennis Wicker, former North Carolina Lieutenant Governor. 2020 Brigadier General, retired James R. Gorman. You've got 2019, the President of Wake Tech Community College. 2018 Dr. Gina Atticson, former State Superintendent of the Public Schools, North Carolina. 2017 Richard Stevens, former North Carolina State Senator. 2016 Thomas Ross, former President of the University of North Carolina System. We've got 2015, the Honorable Sarah Parker, former Chief Justice, North Carolina Supreme Court. And the list goes on. The list goes on. Now, y'all can keep reading off names. Senator Jesse Helms in 2001, veteran member of the United States Senate, received the award. Year 2000, James Hunt, Governor of North Carolina, received the award. And we can keep going. So Mitch, I want to say this is a big deal. We're here to honor that accomplishment, your achievement tonight. And I'll say this is an earned award by this man. Some people may say, well, he's sick, and they did it because he's sick. No. This man has earned this award through hard work, through public dedication to causes that benefit the people that he represented. So Mitch, congratulations on your great achievement, sir. Does any board member wish to make a comment at this point? Okay, Chris, Commissioner Ellison arrived when we ended out here, so I want Commissioner Ellison to say a word to you, Mitch.
Mitch, I appreciate all your years of service and mentorship, guidance, and direction you've given me over the years. I just really appreciate everything you've done for the county and for the state of North Carolina.
Okay. At this time, Mitch, we want to, anything you want to say, Mitch?
Just real quickly, and I'll make it quick because I spoke outside to everybody. And so a couple of things. One is, I'm truly a product of the American dream. Somebody that was raised in Clinchfield, worked hard all his life, and as a result of that work and hard work, the Lord blessed me. And so it's all, everything I've done, I give credit to Him because I have been a very blessed individual my entire life. And I've always recognized that, and I've always give Him credit for that. And you might not believe it, but you can ask my wife. So it goes back decades that I've said that the only reason that we've done this is because of certain gifts that He gave me. And so I give Him the honor for that. All my life, all I wanted to do was return and give back from a young age. And I just wanted to, just out of the things, blessings that I received, I just wanted to return it back to the people and help people. And during my years in the General Assembly, my number one goal was always constituent services and always trying to help the folks in this county get through the regulatory process or just working through the bureaucracy of state government. And so that's where I got my joy from, is by helping people back home. And I never asked them their politics. If they called my office, they got help. Never was questioned that. And so all I've wanted to do is to give back. And so I continue that. And I do it, I've never sought out any recognition. I don't do that. And so I'm still trying my best to contribute for the rest of my days here in this county and give back to the people here in this county who I dearly love and to this state. And so I'll continue that up until the day I die. So I appreciate y'all recognizing me on this. I didn't, I didn't really ask for it. It's like when they called me back in probably January in Raleigh and told me about this award. First thing I said to them, I said, are you sure? And they said, yeah. And then I told them, I said, well, at least I saved a suit because I got rid of most of my suits. So I still had a suit that I could wear down there. But anyway, it's been a good run, and it's still continuing to be a good run because I'm still gonna stay active up until I can't. And so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
If anybody needs a good axe, this man can pick you up.
I can fix you up. Yes, sir.
Okay, gentlemen, commissioners, if you don't mind, let's go out front and present this award to this distinguished gentleman. Mitch, we want you right in the middle. We'll Barbara up here too, and your cousin.
I'll Linda.
Let's get Miss Linda.
How about? Yeah, I'll be Tegan.
Yeah, give him a little.
Let's get them.
Is your brother young?
I think my brother is.
Oh, is he?
He might be. David Tegan.
David's going with him. Let's get Tegan in.
Yeah, come here, Tegan. So Tegan's my little great-granddaughter.
Oh.
Yeah. We'll get Stacey here beside Tegan. Okay. All right. That's my brother Keith.
Okay, Mitch, the board greatly values your friendship, your hard work and your dedication. It's an honor to be able to present this to you today, sir. I want to have the board, thank you so much, and the family, thank you. [applause] Okay, ready? Congratulations, Mitch.
Thanks, sir.
One, two, three. One, two, three. I say Mike's been carrying you for a long time, haven't you, Mitch? She has. Some good and some bad. Yeah, there's a connection there, right, Mike? Okay, thanks to you, Mitch, Barbara, and family for being here to pay, to receive the award. Now, this time, let's move to our next item on our agenda. And we have Chuck Abernathy with us, the McDowell Egnock Development Coordinator Director. So Chuck, come on up, sir.
Thank you. That was a night, very nice event. I've got, I think, two board members here. David Wooton and Joyce Shuford are here with me to make sure I'm treated well.
Who's your board chair, Chuck, on the media board?
David.
All right. David's saying, I said, some people may not know who you are. We know you, but that's David Wooton, the Chamber or Egnock Development Director.
Chair. So I guess we're, we're in a public hearing, which was, which was advertised.
At this time, I would declare the board a public hearing for Egnock Development matter.
Thank you. So one of my favorite quotes, very predictable, is that 70% of your new job creation comes from companies that you already have. And so we pay attention to the businesses and the industry that are, that are already located here. A second quote or, or thing that I'll say is that the governor announces any news like this specifically, but that we have to have a general approval prior to that in order to move forward. The Board of Commissioners is very familiar with the building reuse program. We've, we do two or three of these every year. The, the project is a, is a former company that was purchased by a, a national company and is now operating the, the former company. So most people wouldn't even know that the, that the company has, has, has been sold and purchased by, by someone else. The company employs around 90 people prior to, to this project. One of the things that happens with these is that everything ends up being understated. You actually are going to have more jobs and more investment than what we're, than what we're saying because people are conservative with, with what they want to commit to. And so the, this is probably a bigger deal than what it, what it may sound like. The company will employ 23 new people on top of the, on top of the 90. Again, there's a good chance that that number will, will go up. There's an investment of a little under $1 million, but they've already been spending money on the building and upfitting it. So, so that number will, will go. And if my memory's right, you know, you're gonna generate $6,000, $7,000, $1 million off of the, off the property taxes that are paid with the, with the investment. So from that angle, it's a, it's a good deal. Building reuse is a program where the state of North Carolina puts 50% of the cost of upgrading a facility, and the company does 45%. And then the county or unit of local government does, does 5%. So it's, it's really maybe the model of a, of a program that the, that the state operates. We, we really enjoy it. There is a wage test that the company has to meet, and that test will result in the people being hired earning an average of $45,000 annually, which is, which is nice. The, the amount that the county would be, is, is being asked for, I'm really not clear, but it will range around $5,000 to $10,000 a job. And so we've seen them as low as five and as high as 10. And I've called and said, can you guys not tell me, you know, at least an indication of what we're, what we're looking at? They're probably looking at $10,000 that the state is going to put up, which would be about $230,000. So the company would do 45%, and then the county, again, is being asked to do five, which is going to be between $5,500 and $11,000 for the, for the upfitting. So the general statutes require that you hold a public hearing and receive comment before, before approving this. And so that's the purpose of the meeting and my being here.
At this time, is anybody present? We are in a public hearing setting environment at this point. So does anybody on my right-hand side wish to speak concerning the information you've heard by Mr. Abernathy? If so, just come forward, state your name, and we'll be glad to hear you. Start on the front row, second row, third row, fourth row. Okay, let's go to the left-hand side. My left, anybody on the left-hand side wish to speak? Okay. What's the pleasure of being out of the public hearing now?
My question, go out of the public hearing.
Discussion, all favor say aye. Can you oppose, left side? Okay. Now, Mr. Wooton, anything you need to add to that, sir?
Just a quick add-on to what he said. For the hearing notice we did put in there that the incentive should not exceed $12,000 because it was uncertain because of, you know, the circumstances. So just to, just to be careful with that. But if you so desire, when I stop talking, you can make a motion to approve the incentive, and then that'll allow the application to proceed with the building reuse program.
Make a motion to accept the incentive not to exceed $12,000.
Okay, motion, second. Discussion. Chuck gave a very important fact, that 70% of job creation comes from your current existing employers in the county. So that's a good thing. All favor say aye. Can you oppose, left side? Okay, all right. Mr. Abernathy, thank you, sir. If you're in here now, it's good. Item A, under Old Business, this is our occupancy tax update. So Mr. Wooton, sir, this was tabled for last month, so if you don't mind, go ahead. We've got the information that was requested, and commissioners have reviewed that. So you read out, and then commissioners, anything you need to, questions, feel free to ask.
Yes, sir. So last month, you had a presentation from your TDA Executive Director, Shannon Odom. Presented a lot of great information about the, the visitation and the economic impact we have to the community from visitors, and specifically for what he does, a lot of those stay overnight. And he presented a request on behalf of the Board of Directors from Tourism Development Authority to request the increase from the, for the occupancy tax rate from 5% to 6%. There's a really good question that was asked, essentially, why should we do this? And the why that was presented, the justification for it is and was our surrounding counties have an advantage that we do not have because they are assessing 6% rate, and they're using that extra 1% to market their counties, and they're using part of that to make investments as allowed by the tax of a one-third of that for tourism-related capital. You asked last month for a little bit more information about maybe numbers of, of units that are providing funds to us on a regular basis. So if you go down, I think it's page 21, you see a breakdown from the Finance Department. So again, quickly, the, the county finance department, even though TDA is a, technically a separate public authority, we have an inter-local agreement where they're treated as county staff, and we do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work, like collect the money on their behalf, and then remit what's appropriate. So you see the breakdown there. There are 15 hotels, lodges, and inns, 11 campgrounds with cabins, and then 47 short-term rentals. If you look at that, that's only 73. That, that doesn't sound right, does it? Well, it is for that information. Those are the amount of receipts that we get each month on average. I passed out to you at your place a lot of numbers there, and the gist of it is that the number that you see for 47 short-term rental, that might be a couple of John Doe-type owned cabins, but it also includes Verbo, Airbnb, Expedia, different entities that are collecting on behalf of individuals. And the number that we have on, at your place, this is information from a firm called AirDNA that is out there now tracking this information for folks like Mr. Odom. We have, on average, for the month of March, we have 335 listings in the county. So if you more or less take that 335 and add it to that 73, that gives you a better ballpark of the number of occupancy tax generating rooms or facilities in our county. So again, the 73 can be misleading if you just look at that, but we have 73 accounts on average coming in every month. And I provided a slide from Airbnb to show the gross sales that they have, for example, and the, the tax remitted just from one, as an example. So prepared to answer questions you might have?
Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and accept the resolution with the increase of 1% occupancy tax from 5% to 6%.
Second, discussion.
I just want to say one thing and reiterate that when we discussed this before, this is not an additional tax on the folks in McDowell County. This primarily affects folks coming into McDowell County for vacation or whatever, or they would be spending a night and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
And general statute of governance, the fact that the county does not retain any of the money, but it goes to the TDA, and what they do, they market the county. So that's a good, that's a plus, I think, for the, for the group to be outside of us marketing the resources that we've got.
They do use a lot of that in marketing, but they also do some capital expenses, so...
Exactly. Thank you, Commissioner, as well. Sir. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Can you oppose, left side? Okay. Let's go to item B, in real business, water project update. We've got projects ongoing on all fronts. So Mr. Wooton, sir, floor's yours.
Yes, sir. All fronts is a good way to put it. So a lot of times under the water item, it's informational, so there is quite a bit of that, but I do have some action items for you. I'll focus mostly on that. Again, if you drive around in the Nevo area, around 126 in that area, you're gonna see work by our contractor. We're starting to see some work happening on Wildlife Road now. So that's a new road that started in the last couple of days. We have, you awarded recently the bids for Hoppy Tom Hollow. We're in the startup on that project. We'll be in notification for those property owners very soon. Phase two, which is coming westward towards Marion, we've got one last approval on that, and that'll be under construction very soon. Signed off on something with East End Project off 126 last week, so a lot going on there. Related to East End, and I'll mention the action items, and if you want to just have a one fell swoop at the end, that's okay. There is a resolution attached for that. We'll save for the end. Then ARC-funded project, Exit 90, we're working through some state approvals on that. The Providence area, West Marion Elementary area, had a call today about, from an engineering company, which tells me our, our ad for engineering services is in the paper, which is great. So we'll be in a couple of weeks receiving those in and selecting an engineer to bring back for you, hopefully at the May meeting. And then planning, in the fall, you approved a resolution to submit for an asset inventory and assessment grant to the state. Unfortunately, it was not awarded at that time. Mr. Riddle and I have spent the last couple of weeks working with the state to get that resubmitted, and so there is an action item related to that too. So the last item that I have for you as far as an action item, we have bids for, Mr. Abernathy left, for the Innovation Drive Water Sewer Project. This is the, the old slash original industrial park. And so we have bids there that we would ask that you receive and then award the low bid to Buckeye Bridge for $235,000, I'm sorry, $235,131 for that water sewer project to serve an industrial site there actually too. And that will be funded by Golden Leaf Foundation and ARPA Funds. So two resolutions, one for the AIA grant, one for the East End Water Project, and then the last is the bid-related item for Innovation Drive.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second, discussion, all favor say aye. Can you oppose, left side? Okay, great. Let's go back to the item A, under real business. We missed one item, Mr. Wooton, at the very bottom.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the catch by Commissioner Ellis. Just in a hurry to do good things. So related to occupancy tax, but unrelated to the prior item, the discussion of the 1% increase. As far as I understand, every county in the state that has a relationship with the TDA have received a letter that's in their packet from a firm. TDA have received the letter that's in your packet from a firm, I believe is in Illinois, that represents an unnamed client. The unnamed client identified recently that there were apparently some occupancy tax dollars that they had collected on behalf of clients. And, long story short, we did not get those funds. And so, they found this out doing an audit of their books. They would like to provide those funds to the county and the TDA, which is great, but they don't want to disclose the client for reputational reasons. And so, we've spoken to the Association of County Commissioners, we've spoken to Mecklenburg County, a couple of the counties that are in this boat. Most, from what we can tell, are accepting the terms, which is to accept the money and resolving the situation and moving on. It's not a lot of money for us. It was 100,000-plus for Mecklenburg, makes sense. It's about 5,000 for us.
Well, it was an honest mistake, correct?
That's right.
It was.
And then, when they realized the honest mistake, they notified the counties that were affected, and they're not asking for anything less than what they actually owe. They're going to pay what they owe, correct?
Correct, right.
But we speed up for you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the settlement offer.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and oppose, let's see. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Wood, let's go to item C, under Broadband, broadband update, sir.
Strictly an update, I've been saying, eventually we'll have this out to bid, we'll have it out. It is out to bid now, so we're one of about, last check, about 15 counties that have a completing access to broadband grant opportunity posted. We're in the first four, I think. And so, companies, if they have interest in serving our county, where we have unserved areas, they're essentially going to submit a package to the state and us that says, I can serve this many locations for the amount of money that's available. And so, when all those come in, hopefully there's a lot, and there's a lot to choose from, county staff and the state will review those and recommend back to you the one that essentially serves the most addresses. So, we're very excited that it's finally there. The deadline is May 6th, so it might be the June meeting before we have that recommendation before you, but that is...
This is the final push to make sure the majority of the county residents have broadband, correct?
That's right. And after this one, if they're are unserved, we're going to look at the next one and then we're going to just keep going. It's just part of what we do these days, so, that's right.
Okay. All right. Get up next. Let's go to item D, under Old Business, building update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
This should all be updating for you for at least three of our projects. The DSS Building, which, again, you've prioritized as being in need. We have, Ms. Segman and I met several times with the architecture firm, Little, over essentially trying to get a rough schematic and square footage and eventually cost for what it would take to house the current staff, which is spread across three locations, as well as anticipating growth over the next 20, 25 years. And so, that process is essentially wrapped up. They might have one more thing they need to look at, but your direction early on with that information was to transmit that to our legislative delegation to assist legislative help with that cost, again, since so much of what we're doing is driven by state directives. And so, we're putting that together as we get it and we'll send a package to them. The session will start in the next couple of weeks, but we'll make sure it's in hand before then.
Okay. Comments, questions by board members?
No.
There is none. Let's go to item E, under Old Business. This is an immigration resolution that was brought up last meeting, requesting staff to draft, for board to review, to send from the presidential level now. So, comments or questions about the resolution by board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution as it's presented.
Second. Okay, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye and oppose, let's see. Okay. Let's go to item F. This is in Old Business, trail projects and updates. So, Mr. Wood, you're right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Two items here. First is an update. We have not talked about, in this room that I'm aware of, and hopefully would be aware, about our NC DOT-funded trail project out, Greenway Project between Roe v. Connolly Road and Resisiflex Road, maybe in over a year. And so, the project has been in engineering and design for that entire time. There's a lot of federal hoops to jump through since 80% of the project is federally funded. And so, they've been doing archaeological studies and different things. And so, the engineer has prepared plans at the 30% level. If you looked at them, they look 100% complete, but the 30% is essentially, it's at a review level stage where the state looks at it and they review and issue comment. I did mention, and you've blessed previously, the county receiving ownership of property. At Roe v. Connolly, this is at one end of the trail. This is property that had been purchased by the Foothills Conservancy several years ago. The Friends of Fontana Flora State Trail, which I mentioned a second, received a grant to have that property purchased using state funds. That was purchased and essentially the property is donated to the county, no cost, and that will be the trailhead for the eastern end of that trail segment. The next item, and so if there's no questions about where things, and we're still got a long way to go on that, there's right-of-way easements in the future. We've got a long way to go on that one. Probably will not start construction for at least another year. The next item, there's been discussion with you about somebody essentially serving as what I would call maybe a trail coordinator, whether it's somebody working for a nonprofit or governmental entity, essentially making sure the trail projects, like the one I just talked about, which we're managing as best we can with our staff, that there be someone coordinating all the projects that are going on in the county. And so, there isn't somebody that really is in that position right now. And so, there's been discussion of there being such a person. And if there is a position, where would that position be housed? And so, some of the direction you've laid out is we have lots of irons in the fire and a lot of priorities, maybe best served by someone else. And so, there has been a discussion about the Chamber of Commerce essentially employing a person. And so, the rough idea that's been presented is for the Chamber of Commerce to employ a person that would coordinate trail activities, which is planning, you know, if there's new trails, whether it's oversight of current projects, whether it's the county, town, or city, or wherever. But they're doing a lot of the work on our collective behalfs. And then, how do you pay for such a person? So, a lot of the discussion has been the beneficiaries of this work, or county, city and town, maybe in that order, maybe not, but there's been a rough idea on the cost. And so, before we got too far ahead of ourselves, wanted to talk with the board about, one, is there interest to do that with the chamber? Then, are you comfortable at a cost being shared with the city and town and perhaps others?
How would it be paid for?
We...
The position.
Yeah, the position and what we are, what is the ask for the county?
So, we, for about five years, have had at least one, if not two, line items for trail-type activities. And it's not a very big line item, but we have two right now. One is what we call trail initiatives. That is currently budgeted at about 25,000 because things pop up during the year, something we might own and have to maintain, or more likely, it's an external partner like this. The other is an allocation that's been made for several years for the Friends of Fontana Flora State Trail. I think we've done that maybe two fiscal years. I did do some research today. We did budget 20,000 for Friends of Fontana Flora this year. It's not been allocated, it's been allocated but not requested of that entity yet. Burke County, I did reach out to them and looked at their budget documents. They budgeted 10,000 in the current year.
So, a partnering county has reduced their funding level down to 10 from what?
I believe initially it was at least 20, if not 25.
And the ask is still for us, a smaller county, who's in the same partnership to maintain, what, 20,000?
That's right.
Is that right, accurate statement?
So, you asked what the financial request, what's been discussed and perhaps requested is a better word, essentially for that position is $30,000 to be shared amongst the three or more entities. The county has more of the unincorporated area where work would happen, and so, I guess in theory it makes more sense.
What's asked from the city and to the town?
I got a question about the budgetary impact of $30,000. If it's 20%, is the federal government going to contribute 80% on top of that and this position's going to get paid 150,000?
No, and the 80% has no impact on the coordinator. That's just on the...
I don't think we should put any more into it than what our neighbors are.
So, on the coordinator position, the request that's been laid out is for 30,000 a year, which however that...
Is the total committed salary?
Salary, operating, supply, whatever it would be. 30 is that request.
Has the city and has the town committed any funding that has been requested of them by the group?
I'm not aware of any votes.
Before we vote, I'd like to table this. Until we find out what the town and the city are available to pay, I do understand that it could be, this position could be under the chamber, but I'd like to find that out first.
I second that motion.
Okay, discussion.
Kind of reminds me of the old Abbott and Costella skit where 13 times 7 is 28, it just ain't coming out right.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
I thought you were going to say who's on first, so...
All right, the second. Let's move to item A, under New Business, National County Government Month. So, Mr. Wood, go ahead and enlighten us on that.
April is National County Month, sponsored by NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. And some counties probably have a large staff to do a lot of activities that we do not in that area. And so, we are trying to do some social media promotion and awareness of what our county departments are doing, but there is a resolution declaring it as such.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a request to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and oppose, let's see. Okay, let's move to item B, under New Business, NC DOT items. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
There are two items that have been requested, one from DOT and one requesting of DOT. So, the first one, if you scroll down, I believe it's page 59, there is a GIS map. You will see what is Linville Road, which is north of Lake James. The DOT staff has received a request from the adjacent property owner to that end of that road, requesting that portion of Linville Road be abandoned to the surrounding property owner. It's about .29 miles that would propose to be abandoned. They're the only property owner that is served by that road at that point. We receive these every once in a while. I don't think it's absolutely necessary for the Board of Transportation to receive your comments. So, if you objected, I think maybe they could still do what they want anyway, but I think your favor or otherwise is considered in their action. I did ask for, just for information, when it was last paved, it was last paved in 2013, maybe from an angle of, you know, there's some taxpayer dollars into that at that point, but it has no value to the county as far as access.
This is a benefit to the property owner and agreeable to the property owner?
Yes, sir. They're requesting it. So, they would, at that .29 miles, they would be able to put a gate if they wanted to at that point. They would own it and be their property from here on out. So, we get one of these maybe about once every five years and it's pretty unusual.
That, it just seems like that should be something the state should make the call on.
They, it is unusual that you have input on a state secondary road, but they want to make sure there's no local county interest in it remaining public.
There's no other property owned by any other person on that road?
Not after that certain point.
At the end of that road?
Will it affect any access to any property buttoned up to that? Because, I mean, if there's property buttoned up to that and they need to cross that to get access to their property.
No.
I would want to know that 100% it wouldn't affect any adjacent property owner.
Such as far as service land?
Right. So, and we're in no hurry, but the information provided by NC DOT is that the surrounding property owner is the only person affected by it, but just to be sure, we can check deed records and everything else.
I move we do a little more investigating on this.
So, let's table second. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
The other item is a little bit more straightforward. The Glenwood Ruhr Tan has requested a road closure on June 1st for their annual Gold Rush 5K. This is for about an hour 45 minutes on Polysfalt Road.
Move we approve.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and oppose, let's see. Okay. Let's move to item C, under New Business. This is a budget update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. The first part of your packet is updates as far as property tax collection report, sales tax reports. As far as action items, you do have a project budget ordinance amendment for Sheriff's Office Equipment and Northwest Hardwoods. Both of those are state appropriations and we have to do project budget ordinances for. You also have budget amendments GF 27 through 33, FD 1, 2, CP 1, Enterprise 1, and School Project 3. I'd be glad to go over any one if you would like me to.
Move we approve the budget items as presented.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and oppose, let's see. Let's go to item D, under New Business. This is our America 250 Committee. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. If you are looking ahead a little bit, you might realize that 2026, our country will be 250 years old. And so, I was made aware very recently that the state General Assembly made available to counties a little bit of funding for startup and assistance for celebrating that great occasion.
By firecrackers.
By firecrackers. And so, they are making available $10,000 grants for counties that have an official coordinating committee and so have put together a recommended suggested list of a committee setup. You're free to change it however you would like, of course, it's just a suggestion. And so, there are no names attached to it. If you're agreeable to the setup, for some of these, it would be contacting the chamber and saying, we would like, you know, somebody to serve on this committee or a member of this board, for example. We do have at the bottom, as you see, commissioner appointees. If you would so like to have an advertisement or just name somebody, it's up to your discretion for two at-large positions.
When's the grant application?
May 3rd, so it's very quick. So, we can get the application in and then, once that's in process, the committee can get started after that and do whatever planning work would happen over the next two years.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make approval for the resolution and the creation of the committee.
Okay. Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and oppose, let's see. Okay. Let's move to item F, board appointments. Mr. Wood, you're right ahead, sir.
Did you want to get... Did you want to get the admin items?
Administered ones.
Oh, yeah. What's favor the board?
Would you like me to go over those?
They've read them. We've all had them for...
Okay.
Since Wednesday. Any question about a particular one by your board member?
I accept it as presented.
Okay. Discussion, all favor say aye. Can you pose a like sign? Okay, let's move to our Board Appointments, item F. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
You do have one applicant, and again, maybe trying to save paper if you have one applicant. We didn't put a ballot out. Sarah Brewer for the JCPC. Ms. Brewer is no stranger to that space. She's a current guardian ad litem and would be appointed to serve a position on that.
Okay, what's favor the board?
Move we approve Sarah Brewer. Second.
Discussion, all favor say aye. Can you pose a like sign? Okay. Let's go to item G under New Business, Tax Matters. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. These are your typical refunds, rebills, et cetera, from our tax assessing department.
Move that we approve Tax Matters as presented. Second.
Discussion, all favor say aye. Can you pose a like sign? Okay. We encompass everything under Appointments, Old Business and New Business. Let's move to SIS and Comment. So, Mr. Turner, everybody who signed up, Commissioners, staff reports, Mr. Wood or Commissioners, anything that needs to be brought to each other's attention?
Budget, just want to ask a question. Are you getting close on your notes you did? But when are we going to be having our discussion? When?
Let's see, the budget presentation. Read my calendar. Ms. Bell and I have spoken about that, and I'll have to get back to you on the date. We're hoping before Memorial Day, and so we're trying to have that presented. And so you do have a meeting Wednesday with the school board, which is a big part of the budget request every year, of course. And so I do have a meeting with the Health District at the end of the month with the director. And so I think I have maybe one more office or agency to meet with, maybe two, before we start doing our part as far as putting an ordinance together. So at any point after it's presented or before, but at any point you'd like to have a budget workshop, we're all ears.
Sounds good. Last thing I've got is, last month, Mr. Brown brought up a thing about cameras, about trash on the roads. Someone threw out a sofa, a large sofa, on Bat Cave Road, less than a mile out of Old Fort City Limits, and a citizen, it stayed out there for about a week and a half, and a citizen did pick it up and take it out, and those citizens, I just want to say thank you for taking care of our county.
I did a couple of things, and I want to definitely give credit to the sheriff and the sheriff's office for when if it's like an owner-owned property, a home or whatever it might be, that has an issue, that we get complaints. We get them quite a bit. The sheriff and his staff are currently charged with enforcing that ordinance, and they are always responsive when we send the request to investigate. They go and they talk to people, and they give them time if it's, you know, a residence. It's a little bit different when it's roadside, and they get results. And so it's definitely appreciated for the work they do because they have a lot of things going on. I did talk to Molly Sanfa's extension about having Matt Bernison come. Again, more on the educational side, not the enforcement side. Couldn't be here tonight, but he'll come next month if that's okay to talk about the things he's doing to try to work on the educational side, especially in the school system, about anti-littering. DOT does have, it is the big litter sweep right now, so they have materials available for volunteer groups to do voluntary roadside cleanups. But there is a person in a position at the local DOT maintenance office in that event where there is a sofa or something, they will go pick it up. But it's an issue, and I think, and I've spoken with staff about surveillance, but it's going to be an issue. We've just got to work on changing behaviors.
Mr. Wood, I'd like to personally request that we establish a committee to follow the progress on this and maybe come up with some different ideas, and I'd love to serve on it. Maybe get some people from, you know, our Sheriff's Office, from the, our Waste Control Management Area, you know, different people come together and let's see if we can work on this a little more and identify our, you know, real problem areas and make sure that we get those cameras in the right areas and see if we can do something post off to this.
Bye next month. Would it be okay, Commissioner Ram, if staff reports back with a proposed group, recommended people on that committee?
Yes, could you do that?
Yes, sir. It's fantastic idea.
I do want to say it's not every, not every meeting we have a sheriff with us. He's here tonight, but he came to honor Representative Gillespie, so former Representative Gillespie. But I do want to recognize our sheriff. For everybody who's watching, Ricky Buchanan, come up front, sir. Come on up. I do want to state for the record that the board appreciates the fine job you and your staff do every day. You, Mr. Wegman, had talked to me about our resolution earlier about illegal immigrants and what can we do to make sure our local people are safe. And I want to say that I appreciate the work that your department does. And we know sometimes you don't have the personnel you would like to have out there in the field, but the men and women you do have, Ricky do an outstanding job, and we appreciate your leadership and your commitment to providing safe communities. I mean, just, we can just cite examples, have examples of where your men, the Impact Team, they're making a big difference in this county. We appreciate the work you and your agency does every day. We don't always tell you that, but you're here and we're here, and we want to just let you know that we appreciate you. Any other board members want to say anything? The sheriff is here. Okay, sheriff?
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, do we hear a motion adjourned?
So move.
Second. Discussion, all favor say aye. Okay, may he adjourn.